Session is for the Bark East Pod. This project came before the Planning Commission last month and received a 5-4 vote. That vote sent it to the Board of Commissioners with a negative recommendation for approval. Mr. Pape of the Planning Commission did reach out to our office. He sent in a letter that can be provided to the Board. And in that letter, he addressed that he had spoken with the applicants of this submission. Mr. Pape was against the development within the Planning Commission meeting, voted to send this to the Board with a negative recommendation. And after his discussions with the applicant and seeing the changes that they have made that they will discuss tonight, he sent over a letter to myself, said, based on the continued discussions with the applicant and the changes they are willing to make to address the concerns they have heard from the city, I feel much better about this project moving forward. I wanted to make sure you had all this information so that you can communicate these continued discussions to the Board of Commissioners at the work session. Since he cannot attend tonight, he is out of town. And so I just wanted to let everyone know Mr. Pape's feeling towards the project of that he would like to see it move forward at this point. We do have a couple of representatives here tonight to represent the project who have some discussion topics that they would like to speak with you tonight. If y'all would like to come up.
Good evening. Kevin O'Brien from Cortera, Division of Lennar. Do I need to give our address here, Ethan, or is that okay in the workshop? 9,005 Overlook Boulevard. I do have a quick handout. Can I approach the Commissioners with? As Ethan mentioned, we're excited to present you all with an update on the progress and the changes that we've been able to accommodate on our development. We believe we have an exciting project that, you know, now meets all regulations and codes and is directly in line with the Fairview 2040 Vision Plan. And it incorporates a lot of positive changes and feedback that we've had with both staff and planning with the City of Fairview, including Commissioner Pape. I'd love to give just a quick, brief history of really all the changes we've gone through since approaching the staff and planning about a year ago. And then look to y'all for questions and some conversation. But overall, from the beginning of our project, we've decreased the initial density by over 12%. We've dropped from 270 combined units down to 237. And we're no longer seeking a straight rezone. We have changed from a straight RM8 and RS5 rezone to a pod as recommended by the Planning Commission and to more closely mirror the exact objectives of the 2040 Vision Plan. We have adjusted our effective lot sizes for the single-family detached homes from a minimum of 5,000 square feet to a minimum of 8,200. However, we do have a maximum of 17,200 square foot lots and an overall average for the project of 9,850. The product that we're bringing here is a combination of townhomes and single-family detached homes. Being that we are Lennar, we do both for sale and for rent product. We fielded a number of questions about that business plan of this project and whether the townhomes will be for sale or for rent. Again, I want to reiterate, that's a strategic decision our company makes based upon the economic and financial environment at the time of delivery. Being that this project's still two years away from delivery, that decision will be finalized at that time. What I can tell you is that if these townhomes are for rent, they will rent to working professionals who have growing families that want more space, access to green space at a retail rate. And on the other side, if these townhomes are for sale, they'll sell for a retail rate given market conditions at the time. We have lengthened our driveways. As direct feedback, we heard from the Planning Commission from 21 feet to 25 over some concerns of sidewalk and parking. That's measured from the garage door to the start of the sidewalk. And just to give perspective, that'll accommodate all vehicles now without impeding the sidewalk. Even your largest Ford F-350 is 18 to 22 feet long. So you can now easily accommodate two of those side by side in the driveway without approaching on the sidewalk. And last, we've added a buffered and landscape perimeter around the project with evergreen and canopy trees, and we're committing to protect it and leaving it as undisturbed as possible. With that, you know, appreciate the feedback and collaboration we've received thus far, and would love to hear any questions or comments that you guys have for us.
We'll open the floor for any questions or discussion.
Mr. O'Brien, if you would, repeat how you approached the rental a little bit more plain that I can understand it a little better possibly.
No problem, Commissioner Hall. Being Lennar, we do sell and we do for rent. And as the economy changes, we don't usually make that decision until it's closer to when they're going to deliver. Right now, this project's 24 months at best away from when we're delivering. Given the change we've had in the last year, it's really hard to see where the interest rate environment will be, where mortgage rates will be. And it's part of why we took Townhome here as the selected product is to have flexibility. We heard from the Planning Commission that this was not a site for traditional apartments. And if we had been wanting to do traditional apartments, they'd be 100% rent. The Townhome does give us that flexibility to adjust the business plan as the economy adjusts.
So the adjustment would possibly lend to trying to sell first versus rent?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Well, what I like about the project is that you were willing to make the changes that the Planning Commission asked for. I realize that you, in the report, were voted down there, but he's being a good listener and coming back and then getting one of the Commissioners to change his opinion, which means that would change it to 5-4 and it would be passing. So the sidewalk thing, I think that's a great thing because nobody can say that the vehicles, you know, are going to block it. If they park properly, then there's going to be no encumbrance on the sidewalk. So thank you very much for what you've done, what you've presented to us.
Appreciate that, Commissioner Johnson. We want to be a good partner with Fairview, and I hope you guys can see we've taken feedback over the last year and done our best to accommodate it while also keeping an economically feasible project for ourselves.
I'll echo what Mr. Johnson said. I do appreciate the effort that's being made. And I appreciate Commissioner Pape sending that letter so we can get his thoughts on it. But it does raise, I guess, as Commissioner Johnson pointed out, that would have changed the outcome to the vote that took place at the Planning Commission. And it sounds like his opinion changed after new information was brought forward. We've just experienced a situation like this, not within the last month or two, where new information came up on a project and we sent it back to the Planning Commission just to go through the process the right way. And to me, it kind of seems like this might be one of those situations where if they have made changes that the Planning Commission was asking for, that maybe the Planning Commission should have another look at it. That's, you know, just in my opinion, I think that is sticking to the process and trying to adhere to that as much as possible with it in light of it having new information. I think that would be the best course of action. That's just my opinion at the moment.
Definitely appreciate the feedback, Commissioner McDonald. I would say a lot of what Mr. Pape and I discussed were really clarifications to an existing plan. Also, we're under such a tight timeline with our contract on the land. It puts it at risk, which is why Mr. Pape was willing to meet outside of this and write a letter. Frankly, he understood our tight time that we needed to come to the Board tonight.
And understand that, but I think from our perspective, we're going to take all the time that's necessary to make sure that we get this right.
Understood.
Do you have any changes that have been made in regards to the interior alleyway roads? Are those still as presented at the Planning Commission?
The private drives of the Townhome?
Yes.
They're the same.
So I would, I guess we can start the conversation there, and I'm really just looking for some clarification. You may be able to add to it. Staff may be able to help. When looking into it, and I'll try my best to put my thoughts in a coherent message I guess it really starts with the definition of alley, right? What that road's being used for? And we can only go with what we have on our paper with the city, right? And I'm sure you're aware of about what I'm about to read. I'm sure you've read it. But Section 4, 106 to .8 talks to alleys, and it has some specific reasons as to where alleys are appropriate. Says may be required when appropriate, when the following improve lot access, which you could make an argument it does this, but I think the intention is to prove access to take away from the existing street instead of just being straight alley with no street. Reduce number of driveways onto the streets, not doing this. The street still has driveways coming onto it. It's not a rear-loaded alleyway. And then reduce the need for topographical disturbance. I don't think that's relevant here. Everything outside of alleys per all of our subregs and everything like that. States of the 50-foot right-of-way minimum, some are larger depending on the use case. And then you also have a minimum of 22 feet paved asphalt with 24 being 24 feet if it's curb and gutter, which in this case, I believe it would be correct. So that, I mean, when it comes to alleys, that's kind of the defined way Fairview has it. They also define street and local, or a local street, which is what I feel this, those roads fall into the definition of, in my opinion, a street whose principal function is to provide access to individual properties, which is what this private alleyway is doing. Again, the exact definition of alley is a low-volume lane intended to provide access to the rear or side of lots and buildings and not intended for the purpose of through-vehicle traffic.
Commissioner McDonald, I don't know where we're off track here. We're not proposing an alley. I would like to bring up Josh Rowland, our civil designer.
The width of the, the width of the proposed right-of-way that you have falls into the alley definition is where I'm going back to the alley on. Because if it's a road, I'd love for you to call it a road, but we have very specific design review on that and what it calls for.
Josh Rowland with Kimley Horn, he can speak better to that.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening. Just to clarify, we're proposing a private driveway. An alley, to your point, is something that would serve the rear of a fee simple lot. Typically, if you had a, those are more traditional lots that have the front of the home facing that public street and the garage, for instance, facing the back of a lot. Look at this like you would many other Townhome developments in Fairview and other jurisdictions where the improvements are private and privately maintained and they're only for the access of the residents, similar to an apartment. We have one or two other active Townhome projects in Fairview where we build private driveways and they, some have parking stalls off of the driveway, which we have, and some have driveways to the units off of the private drive. And so that's what we're proposing. It's a private improvement specifically for the benefit of these units. We won't have fee simple lots in this instance. If the development is developed for sale, there'll be a HPR-type plat, and so all of the common areas will be owned and maintained by an HOA versus a management company if it were to be for rent. So I think that's what I'm trying to distinguish between a public alley and a private driveway.
I guess we can just agree to disagree. I mean, I get, it comes down to definitions and how you want to interpret them. Maybe alley is the wrong word, but when you look at the design of the road and the overall width or the narrowness of it and how many properties are using it to get to and from to the main road to that, in my opinion, it warrants wider roads than what you currently have designed.
And I only point out that there is precedent in the City of Fairview for this type of condition in a private setting with townhomes. You know, where we have head-end parking, it's wider at 24 feet, but where we just have the driveways that are much longer than, we only needed the 22 plus the ribbon curbs on the side.
Is there a list of deviations or variances being requested? That was talked about the Planning Commission as part of the master plan submittal.
So potentially, Planning can speak to this, but we are in line with the pod requirement from Fairview.
The part of the master plan pod submittal, list of exceptions or deviations from the zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, and design review manual that are otherwise applicable to the base zone district, including but not limited to setback, slot size, and street design.
We don't believe we have any variances from the pod requirements.
Okay. That's interesting. So I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around, I appreciate you taking planning commission and trying to make it better. I've spent hours reviewing this plan, and then you come forward for the workshop and say the plan's different. And so we don't even have a plan for me to look at that you're asking me to vote on tonight, which is kind of, it just seems backwards, I guess. And I appreciate Mr. Pape giving us our, his opinion, but I agree, should we hear everyone from the Planning Commission's opinion? Do we poll everyone? And to go back on the roads, I had a similar note was, when the ownership, control, and maintenance of any street is proposed to remain in private ownership, such streets shall be designed and constructed to the standards provided in these regulations. And so the street design standard you have right now, the only 30-foot right-of-way we have is an alley. So you have it designed as an alley. Definition of the alley, the use of an alley doesn't follow that. You would be a local access or a local access, which is a 50 or 60-foot right-of-way, from what our street standards are in our subregs. And so the same thing to me, we have a neighborhood, Western Woods, the final section, was a 5,000-square-foot lot, a 20-foot front setback. You've adjusted the setbacks a little bit, which is great. The cars park in the sidewalks. They park on the road. You don't have a grass strip between your sidewalks. Some areas don't have sidewalk on that road. And so it just seems to me, it's over there, when you go through it any time of day, there's cars parked in the road. It's hard to get by. It's hard to access. There's cars parked on the sidewalks. It's hard to walk. So I kind of picture that back section of Townhomes being similar to that. And I don't feel, and I don't know what neighborhoods that design has been, and I think some apartments have had similar private street design or whatever. I just looked at the Town Center piece that we recently approved, and it has similar use of the 30-foot alleyways, but it's behind. It's the rear access point. So it's using as alleys were intended to be used, where you have your main wide right-of-way on your fronts. The houses are fronting, grass areas are green areas, and then bigger public roads. Then your private streets are behind your Townhomes. And so it just, I feel like it's just going to be mass congestion in that area with that layout. And I don't think it meets the subregs.
To your first point, the clarification and modifications to the plan, I believe we handed out. Let me know if you didn't get one. That's the only change from what's been presented, which is why we wanted to focus in on that.
I think the main benefit of our follow-up conversation with Planning Commissioner Pape is that he didn't have a lot of time to review the plans. I think when he reviewed our plan and came to Planning Commission that, you know, we got an email that afternoon from him when he had first looked at him. So we were really just able to clarify what was in the plans. We didn't change any of the lot sizes from Planning Commission to now. We just, we clarified the information that Mr. Pape kind of had misinterpreted at the time. You know, his big ask was, did you change the plan from the work session to the submittal at Planning Commission? And that's what we were able to clarify is, we had more single-family lots, smaller single-family lots at the work session, which was.
6,000 square feet.
Yeah. It was a 5,000-square-foot lot. His big question and concern was, okay, if, you know, if we're not going to give you straight zoning the RS5, what are the effective lot sizes? And that's what's called out in the table that we provided. If you include what the pod requires, the buffers and the open space in the body of the lot, what's that effective lot size is what he was asking about. And we're almost up to the RS10. We're nearly 9,000 square foot effective lot sizes on our current plan.
9,850.
Yeah. And Kevin had mentioned that we have reduced the single-family lot count from the original plan as well. So it was really just a matter of getting him offline and explaining, you know, we did listen. The things you asked for at the work session, we did respond to. And so it was, the only thing we've changed, which is on the handout, is the front setbacks because we heard from another Commissioner at Planning Commission about needing more room on the single-family homes for larger vehicles. And so we said, hey, let's go from 20 to 25 so that we can keep those vehicles away from the sidewalks, give a safe place for folks to push their, you know, kids to ride bikes and strollers to get pushed and that type of thing. So those, those were the, that was the one change, and then otherwise it was clarifications.
And another in line with the alley or the use, the intent of an alley, the way I read it, the 2040 Plan has a development characteristic in the residential transition neighborhood of parking to the rear or side of buildings as a development characteristic. And so even the pictures in that residential transition in the 2040 Plan shows similar, we just referenced Town Center, where your lots are facing, you don't have garage fronts. And so the alley is in the rear access or to the side access point and not just an alley road with lots piled on it. So it didn't fit that either. It just.
Well, and the only thing I'll try to clarify a little better is that we're not proposing an alley. This is a private driveway, just like you would have in an apartment complex where those residents use it to access parking spaces and driveways. These are not fee simple lots that need public access to them. They're all regulated and owned and maintained by an entity other than the homeowner. So we, you know, an HOA or a management association can police, you know, bad actors that might park over a curb or park where they're not supposed to. They can ticket and find people.
Our subregs speak to private roads. The private roads you're describing, our subregs speak to that.
Well, I'm talking about a private drive. We're not proposing public roads here or private roads for that matter. It's a driveway.
Well, according to the subregs that you have to follow, it's an alley. It would be a 30-foot right-of-way profile. It would be an alley.
And I would just compare it to an apartment complex that has none of those things either. It's a single lot with private infrastructure, and they build it to a standard that works for the benefit of the units.
Okay. I just, I don't think it meets the subregs that our rules and regulations are in place.
We definitely appreciate your input, Vice Mayor Butler. We haven't heard any of that complaint from staff and have been told that we meet subregs.
After the Planning Commission meeting, I sat in the crowd. I brought it to staff's attention. I haven't heard any feedback or discussion back from them. They were looking into it.
Our zoning ordinance, Article 10, 206.3, parking, loading, and access for a planned overlay development. All planned overlay district developments shall be subject to the provisions of Article 11, Parking, Loading, and Access, provided that the Board of Commissioners may permit a variance from off-street parking and loading. Requirements in approving and application for a planned overlay district development. And as far as Article 11 for the parking, loading, and access, our staff believes that they have met the requirement of Article 11 in the zoning ordinance for parking, loading, and access to their development.
But what you just read says requires a variance. So on a pod, we didn't grant any variance.
It allows that you could grant a variance. So in their case, a two-bedroom Townhome requires two off-street parking spaces. So you could vary that and require three off-street parking spaces or require one off-street parking space.
Which I do want to clarify, our product has two-car garage, one-car garage, driveways that accommodate cars, and structured parking as well as surface.
So it doesn't meet the subregs, but staff says it's okay? Is that what I hear? The subregs do not?
Their parking requirement is 390 spaces. They have provided 146 spaces via garage, 123 spaces via driveway, and 153 spaces via surface parking, with a total parking spaces provided of 422 on a requirement of 390.
What about the subregs road profiles?
The Article 11, give me just a second, let me get it pulled up. Provides an 11, 106.4, joint and shared accessways. Whenever joint access driveways or cross-access corridors are provided in accordance with the provisions of this section, no development plan shall be approved unless such plan grants an easement for cross-access to and from abutting properties, such as a nation shall be referenced on all plats of subdivision for any affected property. So in their case, with having an HPR potentially in the future and this not being a platted subdivision at this time, they would be required to have access easements from the public street access through each of those driveways to each of the units of access.
And why does the master development plan require a list of variations from the subregs? If the subregs are null and void? And maybe this is a mute point. I don't think it meets. We can stop there. That's.
I think that's a good question. Give me just one second. Curtis and I were.
We're not a subdivision, to clarify.
The master development plan says that you'd have to have any variations from the subregs. You're going to divide the back parcel, the front parcel, the commercial parcel, it's being subdivided.
Within a pod.
And the pod says you have to meet the subregs. It's okay.
It's just that the parcel where the Townhomes are is not, there's not a subdivision. The units do not require subdivision within. All of the other public streets and single-family lots that are being in a subdivision, that'll be platted in a subdivision, will meet the subdivision regs, but the Townhome is not a, the units in there are not in a subdivision. They're on a single lot.
I differ, but why would we approve something that has planning that's less than what our subregs in place require, that our police, our fire, our citizens are going to use these roads? I just don't understand why we would go down from what our standards are.
When we were going through this in the zoning ordinance, Article 10 again for pods, 10, 206.1, relationship to other requirements is the heading. Unless otherwise specified in this article, all requirements and standards established by other provisions of this ordinance shall apply to the development and use of properties located within any planned overlay district. In a case of conflict between the provisions of this article and any other provision of this ordinance, the provisions of this article shall apply within planned overlay districts.
Well, this zoning ordinance doesn't speak to road profiles, so I don't think they're conflicting in road profile design.
The, I guess the conflict there would be viewing this from a shared driveway and viewing this from an alley that you've, or a private street. From a shared driveway, it's very similar to just about every other apartment complex that we have in Fairview. You have, if you even look at the road profile, it shows that the drainage goes to the middle of the road, correct, Curtis? So you would have central catch basins in the middle of the road, which is not typically shown in subdivisions in the City of Fairview. We currently have a crown in the middle of the road that pushes the water towards the curb and gutter. That is shown in commercial parking lots, apartment parking lots, and several other multifamily developments that we have where the water goes to the middle of the road, kind of demonstrating that this is a driveway in a parking lot condition more than a road condition.
Commissioner Butler, to, I guess, respond to about the subdivision regulations. I think in our research, we discovered, you know, kind of a missing piece with standard roads for multifamily developments. Because, you know, in this, in this case, this property is not, I guess I'll back up, this particular pod, which was the RM8 pod, is not subdivided. But we really can't.
But we really can't hold them to the subdivision regulations. Therefore, that table in the subdivision regulations is not something we can refer to, and I'll, of course, defer to planning on that, but that's what we discovered in our research is that, you know-
Then why would a master development plan require a list of variations and deviations of the subregs?
Right, because-
If it's-
Yeah, typically, a master development plan usually consists of a-
This parcel is being subdivided from a current parcel. It's being removed and divided.
I guess, I may misunderstand then. I thought this was two separate pods, one being RM8 and one being RS10?
Right now, it's one parcel. It's being divided into two, and then it's going to be divided into 50 or whatever with the single family. We can move on from this one. I don't think it meets the intent. We have a neighborhood with this design that I've sat up here before and said, "That is an example of what not to do." It is very bad.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that opinion at all. It's just we're trying to find something to help that situation. Absolutely.
Something else I would just want to get clarification on from staff, and maybe this, it sounds like half the stuff that's being brought up isn't necessarily admissible or whatever you want to say in this current situation. My understanding, side note, is a pod not open to all kinds of discussion? Can we not say that in this instance, we would like to have that road designed that way, and that, why are we even arguing if it needs to go through the subregs or not? I think it's a completely reasonable request to have a functioning road when we're building that many lots off of it. We also go back to, and I don't know, Ethan, you might be able to shed some light on this. We're splitting hairs over definitions here, so I don't know if this is considered a walkable subdivision or not. Sounds like it's not a subdivision. I polled the audience. I'm assuming most people in here that don't have any money in the pot would probably raise their hand if they think, if asked if they think this is a subdivision or not. It walks like a duck, talks like a duck, probably a duck. Walkable subdivisions in the subreg 7-107.11, length of cul-de-sacs should not exceed 250 feet. And it also goes on in 4-10, there's another section, 4-106.7, that says, under the arrangement of dead-end streets, 2.0B, that cul-de-sac or a dead-end shall not serve any more than 30 residences. I, this has more than both of those. Now, we can talk about that access point on the back that's not open to everybody as possible, an out for that definition, but again, that's just another one that I found that didn't really jive with what I was seeing in this design.
We discussed this in our initial meeting with our staff, an applicant meeting with the fire chief, and he had that 30 homes on a single point of access is derived out of the fire code. And so that secondary access point, that is only for emergency services to access from the backside of those homes. And so he, the fire chief, was happy with adding that access point to allow them to have access there. If they did not meet that, they would have had to sprinkle all 42 of those homes based on the fire code, 2018 international fire code. So that point was brought up very early on for that access point, and that's where the derivative of it comes, and our fire chief and fire marshal were pleased to see that there was an access point there.
Thank you.
Zoning ordinance, Article 10, 10-201, planned overlay district developments. General provisions, consistency with the comprehensive plan, development plans. No planned overlay district development shall be approved unless all planned developments are found to be consistent with their current issue of the conference plan. There's a long list of things. I referenced the side and rear entry earlier on the development characteristics. Another one that the development characteristics, they have road profile that they show on that. Both of those roads are like 50 and 60-foot right of ways. One has a 16-foot walking path. That's in the residential transition 2040 comprehensive plan. So everything we have is telling us we should be wider, walkable, better parking roads, everything we have. And so we're just having a hard time understanding the 30-foot. I just feel like it's just going to be a mess.
I understand your concerns.
Could I ask a question, Ethan? Based on Vice Mayor Butler's concern, the road on the front meets everything that he's currently questioning on the private drive in the rear? Would that be a correct statement?
Commissioner, I am going to put the plan up so that we can all talk about and be clear on what place we're talking about on the-
Just the one main entrance road is a 50-foot right of way right now. All the interior townlots are the private drives.
While he's pulling that up, I have a question for the applicant on the typical, more so the design engineer. The typical section for the private drive, you have the road crowning to the middle, but then you have 18-inch curb and gutter. Just curious on the design intent for the curb and gutter. Obviously, the crown is going to the middle. Curious on that one.
We just find from a maintenance standpoint, that's a durable, you know, condition to design, you know, it's a nice clean look. It keeps all the drainage in the street. And then just from being that it's a driveway, it's good to collect at fewer locations along the centerline versus along those edges. And there's other options. There's, you know, flat ribbon curbs, but this just prohibits some of those unwanted parking instances.
Just so we're clear, Commissioner Johnson, the local access road that it located that attaches the Highway 100 and loops all the way through the single-family portion of, comes down to the single-family portion of this development, is a 50-foot right of way consistent with Fairview City street standards. The private driveways that are located within the internal piece of this development are the private drives of concern for Vice Mayor Butler and Commissioner McDonald.
Tom, will we have, will Patrick be here for the regular meeting?
I'll be here, sir.
Okay.
I do encourage all the communication that we're able to have during the work session, but I would like to remind you that we do have a beer board meeting at 6:45 as well.
Well, to address the concern of the timing issue, I have no idea whether this will pass tonight or not, but I also agree with Commissioner McDonald and the planning commission taking a look at it. So what I will probably propose is to move forward with first reading tonight, and in that, if it passes, in that motion to take executive action to put this on the planning commission meeting prior to our second meeting this month, which would, you would lose, you would lose no time if it passed, and then we got their feedback and it would be back for us for the second reading. I don't, I don't know how those things would pass or not, but I'm definitely willing to do that to help out a situation that's been drug out for years, actually.
Appreciate that, Commissioner Johnson.
The lot sizes, did you lose any actual lots by going to 8,000, 8,200 square feet?
We did, yeah. We initially started with 60. We came into planning with 50, and now we're down to 42.
42?
That's right.
How many total lose that you lost?
From our original plan, we've lost 18 from what we brought with board. I believe we were at eight.
Okay, thank you.
And that's separate from our original townhome when we came to staff. It was at 215. We're at 195 there on that loss of 20, but that's been there for quite some time. Any other questions for us?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We'll take a five-minute recess, and then we'll start with our beer board meeting.